... for your consent agenda. Item number four relates to LA River Bike Way grant of right from DWP to the Department of Public Works. And number seven is a switchyard interconnection agreement, Hasiyampa, for the Department of Water and Power. There's no impact in the Department of Water and Power's operations.
Well, the fact that you could pronounce that correctly, Mary, it's a consent.
What's the etymology of Hasiyampa?
That I don't know. But I practiced all afternoon on this.
Forget to report back on that, but I don't want to hold this up.
Thirty days, yes. All right, great.
Thirty days, you can find out.
All right, that's fine. So then, let's jump back to item number one.
Item number one, Bureau of Sanitation report in response to motion relative to the city's e-waste collection program and related matters.
Good morning, Councilmember. Stan Myers from the Bureau of Sanitation, solid resource at Citywide Recycling. The city of Los Angeles has maintained an e-waste collection program since the year 2002, started as a pilot program. In 2004, the state banned the disposal of electronic waste into the trash. Due to the success of the pilot and the new state regulations, the city implemented a permanent electronic waste recycling program. That program is now maintained at the city's six safe centers and either four or five permanent collection events that we have throughout the city. Sanitation has also taken over the collection of e-waste from city facilities. That goes through the General Services Department. That e-waste is collected through our city contracts. Early in the program, the city recognized the necessity to ensure the processing of the e-waste in an environmentally responsible manner. Right now, the way it works is the city maintains two contracts for the processing of e-waste. That e-waste is required through contract to be dismantled within the city of Los Angeles. The e-waste, when it's dismantled, is broken down into different commodities. That commodity is then sent to various areas, typically out of the country for further processing. The commodities are broken down mainly into plastic, metal, glass, and then the precious metals that are recovered from the electronic waste. We also ensure the e-waste is properly handled by doing periodic site visits to the facility. That's a requirement through our contract is to, they allow us at any time to come into the facility. We ensure the material is being properly dismantled and shipped out.
All right. Does you want to add something?
No, not if it's time.
Okay, all right. Mr. Garcia, did you have any questions?
No, I did not. Just, well, actually, one quick one. The exporting, not exporting, what do we anticipate costs increase is if we pass something that would prohibit us from exporting e-waste, which I'm supportive of, and I just was wondering if this can go back to?
Our cost, if we were to, the way we would like it to be structured is that no e-waste is shipped out of the country as a whole unit. But to allow for the dismantling of the electronic waste here within the U.S., and then after it's broken down into different components, it's just like material at a recycling facility. So once it's broken out into plastic, so it will not have an impact to our program because we already do that. We do not allow for whole units collected through the city's program to be shipped out. But the support of that legislation would protect, you know, the residents of the U.S. as a whole by ensuring that all the e-waste is properly handled.
Okay.
All right, well, we don't have a quorum, but, so we'll send this forward without recommendation.
As a communication.
Communication. So we'll communicate that we support the recommendations. Okay, all right, that's item one. Item two.
CIO report and Public Works report relative to proposed settlement agreement in general lease with NEO Lopez Canyon and MM Lopez Energy. We have staff from sanitation.
And if you want to, since time is of the essence today, if you can just talk to us about the revenue that the city is going to generate annually from this project and the stage of closure Lopez is currently at, and whether the settlement agreement is conducive to the city.
Okay.
And whether costs that affect the city are included in the settlement agreement, associated with the city are included as part of the settlement agreement.
Would you like to do that?
Okay. I could answer that. Khalil Gauri, Bureau of Sanitation Division Manager. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Councilmember. First, the question about royalties. Currently, we receive a total royalty payment from the contractor for the use of the gas to generate power, about, we say, in the range of $800,000 a year. We receive $240,000 royalty from the sale of power, and we receive $150,000 as a loan repayment. So we had to sell the landfill gas collection system in order for the contractor to be able to just receive the green power contract agreement. They have to be, they have to own the landfill gas collection system. Also, we received $12,000, the basic rent, at $240,000 a year for ONM, and between $45,000 to $60,000 bonus payment. That's the service that we provide to the contractor, Bureau of Sanitation, and when we just give them good quality gas, we receive a bonus payment for giving them a good quality gas. As far as the settlement agreement, the issue is, it's good for the city to settle with the contractor. The main issue with that settlement agreement, when we signed the contract with MM Minnesota Methane, we were under the impression in the negotiation to install 12-megawatt power plant. And when they were going through the permitting process, and because economical reason, they only could install six-megawatt plant. And we agreed to that at that time, but unfortunately, we did not revise the contract document to reflect that agreement. It's mainly, that's what, part of the settlement agreement, so we want to make sure that they could be able to use the flares.
So is that why you need the contract amendment?
Yeah, that's the contract amendment for amendment number three. Now, the one thing that I want to share with you is, we were flaring the gas as of April this year. Minnesota Methane had a contract executed with DWP to sell the remaining gas that is not used by MM Minnesota Methane. So we're hoping, currently, we're working with DWP to just kick off and start their microturbines. And I'm hoping within the months or so, every single pound of gas that we're generating at the landfill will be converted to green power.
Okay. Any other questions?
The money from those sales goes to general fund, or does it go to, what sort of fund does it go to?
It's, the, half of the royalty goes to the closure of, closure fund to help close closing the landfill, and half of the royalty goes to a fund that is managed by Council District Seven, for the community.
Okay, don't go too far. Mr. Alarcon's on his way up. He wants to weigh in on this, and so we'll leave this one open. And then, I just want to jump ahead very, don't go away.
I won't.
Yeah, okay. On item, let's see, I think it is six? That's in my district. Is there anybody here to report on item six? Let me just come on up real quick, and I'll just ask you this quickly, and maybe we can dispose of this one. So are you, is it feasible to create an underground wiring district? Can you tell me that?
Yes, it is. We've looked at the, Marvin Moon from LA Water and Power.
Great.
We've looked at the installation and conveyed a preliminary assessment that this is a two-and-a-half mile undergrounding district on Central Avenue between Slauson and Washington.
Okay.
And it is feasible in a neighborhood of $10 million.
Okay, and then, will you let me make a follow-up with you so that we can start working on putting together the applications and the process so that we can start laying down the foundation for making sure that we fund it?
Right.
I think we probably are, I think we've already started.
Yeah, to that extent, we, yeah, there was some discussion regarding the funding. The ordinance for undergrounding requires the technical committee to make an assessment with all stakeholders, including the utilities, and it has yet to be done.
Okay. All right, and I can't remember, have we passed that ordinance yet?
Oh, the ordinance is very old, it's from the 60s.
Okay, great, all right.
So we formed a technical committee.
Okay.
They look at everything with the stakeholders, and there's an outreach portion of it. And then, then, at the end of the day, if the things look good from the technical committee, you would make a resolution to support the ordinance to make it a district.
Excellent. Okay, great. And also, let the record reflect, we've been joined by Ms. Gruehl, so why don't we go back to the items that we have, with the exception of the one that's sitting on the desk, sitting on the table waiting for approval.
Certainly. Item number one, recommended approve.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Item number four, approve as well.
And then we just did six.
And six, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the disposition was on item number six.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval, okay. And then, item number seven, approve as well.
And then, I think we had one other consent item, did we not?
That was number seven.
Okay, okay, we just had one?
No, we had two, four and seven.
Four and seven were consent items. Okay, great. So that leaves us with item number?
Thank you, by the way, for all your help with the LA River stuff, too. Been great.
That leaves us with three and five.
Three and five, and then two for Ms. Gauri.
We're holding for Ms. Gauri. Okay, great. Why don't we go to item number three, because I think we can go through that pretty quickly, because we have cards on five.
Item number three, CIO report relative to light-emitting diode energy efficiency program. Joined by Bureau of Street Lighting as well.
Okay.
You look familiar. Can I see on TV the other one?
Okay, tell us where, okay, this is four or five, okay. Since we're holding for Mr. Alarcon, why don't you, I think you, your report's going to indicate that you've got minimum energy savings of about 40% of current consumption, and tell us about the actual savings rate you're expecting, what does this rate represent in energy costs, how you guys plan to roll out your program, and tell us where the $17 million gap is being funded from. Is that enough?
Eddie Ibrahimian, I'm the Director of Bureau of Street Lighting. As you know, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, this report and this proposal is part of the approved budget for next year, city's approved budget. I have brought a summary report also that basically summarizes the entire report, which is about 40 pages. The proposal is to convert 140,000 streetlights in the city of Los Angeles to light-emitting diode fixtures. As part of the plan, we will be saving, at the minimum, 40% of energy consumption for 140,000 streetlights. We envision we will be saving approximately $7.5 million annually, once we're done with the conversion of all the 140,000 streetlights. We also think because of the long life of those fixtures, we'll be saving some on the maintenance sides also. The proposal, the plan is, the cost of the project is about $57 million. $40 million of the $57 million is coming from the Department of Water and Power as part of a loan that we're in the process of finalizing with the Department of Water and Power. About $16.4 million also will come to us from the Department of Water and Power as part of the rebate program that they have in place. And about $3.5 million will be used from Streetlight Maintenance Assessment Fund to make this program work.
Quick question, because I know we had a spate of vandalism of our streetlights because the copper costs rose on the market and people started stripping the insides of the streetlights. Will these conversion lights be vandal-proof?
Well, yes, to some degree, because, first of all, we've had a lot of fixtures that we were shot at by, as a result of vandalism in the past, because the fixtures had a lamp, and by taking out the lamp, the whole fixture would go out. The LED fixture has basically 30 points of light-emitting diodes, so it's not one fixture or one lamp that they can take out.
Does it still have copper inside?
Well, the wiring is going to stay. The underground wiring will stay, but it will do, it will use less wire to be able to bring the energy because it uses less.
Let me ask you something, and you can come back and tell me without having to do it in committee, because I know after we had that, I guess, like, almost viral attack on our streetlights throughout the city, that Public Works had said that they had implemented a program where they were securing the light standards, and maybe you can come back and let me know how much progress they've made, because, you know, it'd be a shame to go through this incredible conversion program only to have, you know, the market spike again and then have our lights vandalized yet again.
Right.
Because, as you know, and some of us who represent areas where, you know, heavy pockets of crime, you know the difference that having good lighting on the street makes.
Right.
Other quick question is, just tell us the process you're going to go through to decide where the converted lights will go.
Well, we've started installing in different council districts. We are doing kind of an expanded test. We've requested information from each council offices, and I think we've already installed 10 in each council district for, as part of an expanded test. But we plan to systematically start from one part of the city, and at this point, I think we're going to start from the valley and come down from the valley, and we don't, we want to cover it in a systematic area, so because of the LED light and the color of the light that is going to change from orange-ish-yellow to white, we think it would be a better idea if we will start from one part of the city and then cover the entire city.
Why don't you do this, because I think it'll spare you questions later, why don't you just do a list and print out by council district of where the lights are going to go so that everybody knows, and there's, you know, you know, just do that, and, I mean, you can do that informally, and I'll have Mr. Catalano contact you, and then we can make sure to communicate to all the council districts so we know.
Okay.
Okay, great. And then, let the record reflect, Mr. Alarcon has joined us. Other comments about your report?
I have to hold that for you. You're okay?
I just had one major comment regarding this. First of all, without the help of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, this would not be possible, because the entire funding, more or less, is coming from the Department of Water and Power, so I just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thank you.
Tom is here from the Department of Water and Power.
Do you want to hold that up for us?
But what I wanted to show you here is the main impact the citizens of the city of Los Angeles is going to see as part of this conversion. What you see here is a high-pressure sodium fixture, and it's an area, and then, what I have here is what will happen to city of Los Angeles.
Yeah. You might want to hold it up and let everybody see it behind you, there's a big difference. Before.
Before.
Before. Okay, yeah, okay, Vanna White.
Wow, look at that.
I just want to point at, no, I just want to point at a couple of things. First of all, if you look at the high-pressure sodium, you see all the dark spots here.
Yeah.
And second thing, and there is nothing here, and the second thing, which is really important, which Police Department really likes, is the color rendering. If you see the green color of the grass on the other side and the color of grass here, you can clearly see the color, and that's one of the major reasons why the Police Department really supports this program.
That's great, that's great. Anybody else want to add anything? Do you approve of this?
Councilmember, we recommend, David Horano from the CIO, we do recommend this program. We've gone through it, and it actually is, the proposal submitted by the Bureau is very thorough, very complete. It's actually one of the most impressive ones I've seen in my 19 years here.
Great.
We do have some recommendations that we'd like to amend our report with. Subsequent to the issuance of our report, the city council made a move to put a lot of positions in the UB, and some of the positions that were put in the UB were the ones that Mr. Ibrahimian needs to actually implement this program. So what we've done is we've provided you with a list of those positions and some recommendations we would ask you to consider pushing forward.
Has this gone to Budget and Finance yet?
Has not.
It's going to have to go to Budget and Finance.
No general funding.
Personal.
But he might go to personal because of the resolution authorities.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's?
Yeah, so if you could accept those as additional recommendations from our office, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, Tom Gaxter with DWP, and just wanted to say that DWP's a very happy and willing participant in this, this program, in this energy-saving project. It means a lot to us in terms of our energy savings goals, our compliance with AB 32, our compliance with AB 2021. This just has multiple benefits to the Department of Water and Power, its ratepayers, and the city of Los Angeles. We're glad to be a part of it.
Great. Okay, great. Mr. Alarcon has joined us. Are there any questions or comments?
I was just, I just want to make sure the, could I see the picture again?
Oh, of course. Give me the whole thing.
Hand it over.
Hand it over.
You want your own before and after? You want your own before and after?
I'll do my Benoit.
Okay, let's see it.
I was just, the, the other concern, besides the energy concern, was the light that goes up.
Right.
Does this meet the same standards?
Oh, yes. It exceeds the standards, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Prior technology was a lamp technology. This is a directional light fixture, so it's completely controlling the light trespass and also the sky glow.
What do you call it?
Sky glow.
Sky glow and?
Sky glow, yes.
And light trespass.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, without objection, we recommend approval on this.
Congratulations, Senator.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then, make sure you get those lists to each, all of us, so, you know, maybe one master list per council district, where they're going.
Yes.
Okay? All right, I appreciate that. Now, Mr. Alarcon, I held two for you. Are you okay with that now?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. So if there's no further questions or comments on two, we'll recommend approval on number two. Get your visual aid.
That leaves you with item number five.
Yeah, and we have, we have some cards. Why don't we take the staff report on number five first?
City of V report in ordinance relative to many in the municipal code established water efficiency requirements for new developments and renovation of existing buildings in the city.
I'm Jim Caldwell. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Environmental Affairs at the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and this is Amir Tabak, who's Director of Environmental Engineering at LADWP recently from Department of Building and Safety. And some, the last time that the city faced mandatory reduction in water supplies in 1991, a committee much as this met and passed an ordinance that mandated 1.6-gallon-per-flush water closets. And from that, plus the application of LADWP rebates to push those new water fixtures at the time into existing buildings, is probably the principal reason why today we can serve a million more customers with the same amount of water. And we're here today to do it again, to update the standards for high-efficiency plumbing fixtures to the state of the art and to try to push, again, a transformation in the way we use water in the city. What the ordinance would do is it will accelerate the 2014 California High Efficiency Plumbing Fixtures Standards under AB 715 to December 1st of this year, 2009. It applies to retrofits and renovations as well as to new construction, which is different from AB 715. And it also pushes the urinal standard from the current high-efficiency standard of one-half a gallon per flush to one pint per flush or waterless, which we feel is now the state of the art, fairly recent development in the industry. And finally, it's a collaborative effort of the Department of Building and Safety and the Bureau of Sanitation, and I want to commend both of those departments for the collaborative way in which we developed this ordinance, and that the implementation of the ordinance, assuming that we can get it passed, will be a significant effort of both Building and Safety and us as we move through the next, the rest of this year. What it would save, these fixtures will reduce residential water consumption by almost 20% from what is out there today, or reduce commercial water consumption by almost 30%. So if and when the building stock in the city were turned over, i.e. that all fixtures or all buildings in the city use these new things, we would save roughly 60,000 acre-feet per year of water, which is enough for 80,000 to 90,000 households. This ordinance and LADWP's Water Conservation Rebate Program will accelerate the market transformation to, again, to make these fixtures in all existing buildings. And we feel that out of that 60,000 potential, eventual potential, that within five years, we can save roughly 15,000 acre-feet per year of water through the passage of this ordinance. We also feel that the city of Los Angeles, if we pass this ordinance, it will be adopted by many other jurisdictions. We already have many other jurisdictions who are asking to see the ordinance to try to, try to pass it. We've also, we attached with the report a chart which shows the cost analysis, I don't know, I assume you have that in front of you. Without going through all of the details on the chart, I would say that if you look at the last three columns on the chart, first, we talk about the estimated payback if you had a new construction, i.e. where you were going to buy that fixture anyway, and the issue was whether you bought a high-efficiency or a standard fixture. And with our rebate structure, it's going to be cheaper for new construction to buy the high-efficiency ordinance, or to buy the high-efficiency fixture. The same goes, is true for retrofits. That is, if I'm going to renovate a bathroom and I have to buy a new fixture for the bathroom, it's going to be cheaper to buy a high-efficiency fixture than a normal fixture. Finally, in the last column there, we show what the payback would be if someone just says, "Well, I just want to replace my toilet or replace my, replace the urinal, simply to save water or my sewage charges." What are the payback for those? And if you look at that, you can see that under the water closets or the toilets, that the payback is fairly long, and that's, again, because we passed this ordinance 19 years ago, which mandated fairly efficient things, so the efficiency.
What chart are you referring to?
I'm sorry. It was in the back. We'll get you, I'm sorry. I apologize.
There you go.
But again, 19 years, pardon?
No, I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry. But, but as I say, 19 years ago, when we passed the ordinance for, for efficiency toilets, that, that the change or the difference between now and 19 years ago is not that much, so it's difficult to justify. And that's one reason why, when we do these things, we want to push for the most efficient fixture that we can, because whatever we leave on the table, it's going to be very difficult to catch up the next time, and so we're going to leave a lot of, a lot of fruit on the foot. So we're trying to, again, push as hard as we can, recognizing that what we have to do is make sure that these fixtures are available in commerce, and that they're reasonably priced, and that they're competitively priced, and that there's multiple suppliers of each.
So you don't think your ordinance is going to have any negative impact on development of product supply to the consumer?
We think it'll help. We think it'll help.
Until there's enough incentives in place, so as people replace their fixtures, they'll feel incentivized.
They'll feel incentivized, that's correct. And if they don't, and if we find something on that, then, then what we're going to do is either adjust our rebate structure or try to develop new products that meet the standard that are cheaper.
Do we, we have several cards on this item. Did you want to speak also?
No, I guess, with your permission, I would allow the individuals to talk.
Okay, do you want to identify yourself for the record?
Amir Tabak, with Department of Water and Power.
Why don't, unless councilmembers want to ask questions now, why don't I go through the cards?
Afterwards, that's fine.
Okay, Eric, do you want to ask him?
No, no, I'll do it afterwards.
Okay, great. Why don't we free up the seats, and then I'll call three people up at a time. Frederick Avilar, or Ave Lar, Terry Desmond Jr., and Sean Ternage. Is Sean here? Come on up.
Madam Chair, do you, two minutes?
Yeah, well, yeah, two minutes each, that's all right. But you don't have to use the whole bit. Getting to the point is always deeply appreciated. All right, Frederick?
Can we move the microphone over, just for folks who listen?
It's pretty obvious that we have water problems looming amongst us. We produce, my name is Frederick Avilar from Smart Kids Technologies, and we produce a retrofit, very inexpensive retrofit, that will convert a five-gallon toilet, or three-and-a-half-gallon toilet, or 1.6-gallon toilet into an HET toilet at a fraction of the cost of what it would cost you to, to purchase a water-wasting toilet. It'll save a family of four approximately 25,000 gallons per year. And, and all I want to say is that the technology is here. I would think that we would use the technology that we have before us, and all I ask is that, that you endorse water-saving, water-saving devices for family use that are that, that you endorse water-saving, water-saving devices for, for family use that, that are inexpensive to purchase.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Desmond Jr.
Sorry, my J looks like a T. It's Jerry Desmond Jr.
Whoa, sorry, I messed that up.
I apologize. And I represent the Plumbing Manufacturers Institute, a PMI. It's an international trade association of the toilet and urinal faucet and showerhead manufacturers. Thirty-four member companies produce perhaps 75% of the market products that are out there. I wanted to say, we've been working together with the Department of Water and Power and Jim and Amir, who are here, on the different specifications that are set forth in the draft ordinance, and we know that they'll work in terms of the references and the, the technical information and requirements that are in there, will work for the manufacturing community. We, there are a number of provisions that reflect our input. The only thing that we can give some certainty to, as I'm with you today, is that we were, we negotiated the AB 715 implementation date of 2014 for all new products to comply with HET, HU standards that are set forth in the ordinance statewide. So this is more aggressive, moving forward to an accelerated date, and we just don't know with certainty we're going to be able to make it as a manufacturing community to provide the sufficient supply of efficient and effective product. But we're committed to work together with the city as this is rolled out and as other cities throughout the state work to implement it.
Thank you. Sean Ternage?
Yes, my name's Shaw Ternage, and I represent Zern Industries. The company that I work for is Westmark Enterprises. For Zern Enterprises, for Zern Industries, we are the manufacturers of the pint urinal and the 1.28 gallon flush toilets, some that you see pictured in those pamphlets in, in front of you. But we're strongly in favor of the ordinance, and I'm here on their behalf.
Great, thank you very much. Our next three speakers will be Roger Lighthart, Jaime Valdivia, and David Otterstein. Mr. Lighthart.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and council members. I'm a plumbing, my name is Roger Lighthart. I'm a plumbing contractor in Los Angeles, second generation, and spent my whole life fixing leaks. And we're not really addressing, saving water in every way possible, and having more efficient fixtures, of course, is a reality, and the only way we got it done was by enacting a, a law, and industries stepping forward. They stepped forward 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and now they're stepping forward again very rapidly, and we have some excellent products on the market. However, as a licensed contractor and the installing person responsible for that end product, I want something that works, and there's a few products that I really wonder Right now, I, I wish you would support the building department, and particularly the mechanical side, in helping them get approval of these fixtures. Right now, the International Association of Plumbing Officials has pulled their so-called listing, this is the fixtures, the different fixtures, and do they really perform as, as a manufacturer says they do? And especially in public areas where they use a flushometer, a flush valve around a They're not, the, the building department is not accepting the standard. They've pulled the, the listing right now because the listing officials can't certify that a particular flush valve and a particular fixture is compatible and do you get the performance you want. So we're having trouble on our new work here in the city, where we've gone ahead, stepped ahead to get our lead credits and use these ultra-efficient fixtures. When we go to, for inspection, because they're not officially approved, we have to go back to the LA testing lab and get special approval. So in the enactment of this legislation, let's make sure we've got the cooperation between the departments.
All right, thank you.
Other than that, we're on a run.
Sounds good. Okay, Jaime Valdivia.
All right. Madam Chair, council member and staff, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to come here to speak to you. My name is Jaime Valdivia. I'm the Senior Assistant Executive Director at the Piping Industry Progress and Education Trust Fund, and on behalf of PIP, I'm here to express our support for the water efficiency requirements for the construction of new buildings and installation of new plumbing fixtures in the existing buildings in the city of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles has always put forward many new initiatives to foster water and energy conservation. Your approval on this resolution would be just another improvement for the city, which will oversee sustainability and promote the creation of good jobs within the community. PIP would once again like to thank all of you for all the support that you've given us here and also helping to establish these programs and to ensure that the city of Los Angeles and the citizens there are healthy, well-educated, and have a can, a chance to be engaged in sustainable energy future. Once again, I'd like to thank you, and I hope that you guys got the letters that we dropped up on the third here and, and our support there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Otterstein.
Good afternoon, committee members. I also work for the Piping Industry Progress and Education, so we kind of got us back-to-back here. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. We are here to stand in support of this. It, it's time that we put a little backbone in the language, and this will help us all on our way to the conservation, green, sustainability, and making a better environment for our children and the future children coming in front of us. We know we're low on water, and it's time that we stepped up and, and made a little more effort to make these, these energy and, and water-efficient changes in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Jay Chase and Daniel Lieberman. And that's it for the cards.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and council members. My name is Jay Chase. For the past 35 years, my company, Amir Chase Plumbing, has been working in the high-rise buildings in downtown Los Angeles, Century City, and the Valley. The installation of high-efficient water-conserving plumbing fixtures is a solution to our current water consumption crisis. Over the past three years, at the Arco Towers, two 50-story buildings in downtown, we have replaced over 600 three-and-a-half gallon flushing toilets, 300 urinals, 600 metering faucets. This is just one example of an owner saving water and saving money. The LADWP rebate program and the cost savings through less consumption have stimulated building owners to reinvest in the long-term water conservation with high-efficient plumbing fixtures. We have at this time 10 different proposals out there to replace over 1,500 plumbing fixtures. But these proposals, this work, may not come to fruition without the LADWP rebates. With today's economic challenges, this ordinance is a great example of how the city of Los Angeles, building, and building owners can work together creating a solution for this crisis. Thank you very much for your time, your vision, and protecting everyone's future.
Thank you very much. All right, and then our final speaker, Daniel Lieberman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Danny Gleiberman. I work for a local company here in Los Angeles called Falcon Water Free Technologies. And to echo almost everything that everybody has said, I also want to give my thanks to the LADWP staff and to the LADWP Board of Commissioners, who, as you know, first looked at this ordinance and did a lot of work on it before it became the U. I really am here only to support the ordinance. I have some water facts which are just interesting. One of the reasons I think this is such an important piece of legislation is because it shows once again that our city can lead by example. This ordinance doesn't require behavioral changes on the behalf of our residents like we're going through right now with our water conservation. This is truly a better way to use our existing water supply. Efficiency is very important. My company in particular, as well as many others that would be pertaining to the ordinance, have proven that we don't need to waste water to get the same job done. Just some very quick facts, I know time is very limited this afternoon. In the two years that we received the city of Los Angeles' approval to install our urinals, we've installed over 3,200, saving approximately 131 million gallons of fresh water every year. And we talked about conservation, efficiency, and sustainability. I believe one of the true strengths of this ordinance is it allows for sustainability in the future. When we go to more efficient fixtures, as Mr. Chase was saying, we will then see those water savings year after year after year, and that will allow more people to come to our city and have a safe, reliable water supply, and in fact, for our future children and grandchildren as well. So I thank you very much for your leadership as well.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Garcetti has some questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your public testimony. Appreciate it. And it brings back memories of when we first got together like six years ago, and I think Falca and others were there in the pipe trades, and, you know, we had some, some work to do to get each other comfortable. But now to hear everybody unified around this, this is going to be, I mean, it's, it's very smart. This is good for jobs, this is good for conservation, and this is good for business because they're going to save so much. And I want to thank DWP and my own staff as well, Sam Siegel, for their great work on this. If, if you're the pothole queen, Ms. Gruehl, and, and you're the mayor of downtown-
Or just a queen.
Yeah, or you know, I, I guess I'll be the low-flush guy, or something, because this is something I've been passionate, I don't want to be a queen, but thank you. I appreciate the, the offer. Now, there's anything wrong with that, I just wanted to be clear. But I, I'm very passionate about this, and I think Los Angeles will really lead the way on this. And when you look at the estimated payback on this, this makes so much sense for everybody out there, especially in tough economic times. I'm going to go a little further today also and ask if we can get DWP to look at retrofit on resale ordinance, obviously for us to consider, but that's also another place where we can accelerate. We'll work with realtors. Whenever we do anything at point-of-sale, people get nervous, but I think that we really, we're in crisis mode. Our leadership in the city showed before what we can do. This is going to do it again with the, moving this forward. But I also think that it's a great opportunity if we can look at the resale of homes as well and perhaps requiring retrofit on that. And we'll step up. I mean, DWP can get some bonus from, from doing this too. It makes a lot of sense, and we'll look at ways to help defray those costs. But anything from the water urinal, which has like a two-month, I think, return on investment, to some of the other, the lower-flush stuff, which, you know, you'll get it back. People don't replace their, their toilets, you know, every six and a half years, and yet we know that, that we'll get that payback even in the, the slowest estimated payback of this entire chart. So just want to thank everybody, really, really proud day and glad to see this moving forward.
One other, just quick question before we close on the provisions in the ordinance regarding enforcement. Just give me a quick, maybe two, two, three-sentence summary on that, and how realistic is it that we can accomplish that?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Lighthart pointed out that, that it's not going to be totally seamless as we, as we change new and as, as every last plumbing inspector gets to understand what these new fixtures look like. And so what, what we in Building and Safety have committed to doing is working very hard between now and December to put together a manual for all the inspectors, to conduct training, to bring in, and to take care of some of the issues that Mr. Lighthart talked about.
Let's see, it's going into July. Why don't you come back around the, maybe the end of September, October, and give us an update as to how it's going?
Sure.
Okay, because this is going to be really important.
Okay. If, if you want, Councilman Garcetti left, I could mention on the retrofit on resale that there is a, there is a bill before the legislature that's sponsored by Senator Padilla on retrofit for resale. It is facing some headw, some headwinds at the moment. It's just got amended the other day. We made the conscious attempt to not include retrofit on resale in this ordinance, intending to come back and to see what we can do with incentives as opposed to a mandate on that particular issue. But we will be revisiting that issue.
Incentives are always a better way to go.
Well, we'll, we'll revisit that issue. If we can't do it with incentives, then we'll figure out some way to get it done.
All right, Ms. Gruehl.
Just a question. So if I'm reading this correctly, that DWP had been working on this for a while, and then, and, and this was kind of a, once they came up with this idea, then the city council has to adopt it?
That's correct.
Okay. So had it, when did they start working on it?
We started working on it late last fall. Is that right?
October 27th is the date we started on this.
That's when we hired him away from Building and Safety.
More specific, please.
Yes, October 27th, and again, the department was working on these for about two years. And once I transferred from LADBS to LADWP, this was the first assignment I got from my boss like 10:00 in the morning. And we got on it-
What time?
10:00 in the morning. And again, we got on it right away, and the reason, there is enforcement date for September 1st, 2009, is because we want to have that manual. And the reason to that is that the courts are always six years behind the technology by the time we adopt. We know about that. We have everything sorted out. And again, there was a language in the ordinance that was negotiated between the city attorneys of building and safety and water and power. It means if a building cannot comply, the appeal has to come to water and power, and the environmental efforts will handle that. And that is due to some of the buildings we have with less than 2% slope in the city. So we have taken into consideration a lot of factors. The seven pages of ordinance that you see has about 3,000 pages of backup work. We have checked the production of every manufacturer, including the PMI through the whole country in the US and outside the US. In terms of the pressure that is available in our city, the product availability, does it fit in a high-rise, low-rise, commercial, industrial? We have done all sorts of research with all the professionals worldwide. And I'm very, I can assure you that this thing is a win-win for everybody.
And, and so there, so the, the DWP Commission already adopted this ordinance-
Correct, in March.
And then the motion came forward to kind of then bring it to council. Would it have come to council either way, or?
It has to come to council.
One thing I'd like to add, we also changed the language on Section 103.1, 1.2, 1.9 of the Los Angeles Plumbing Code, which is a, as a part of this ordinance under Rule 38. And LADBS, Department of Building and Safety, they're very kind, they changed the language for retrofit and water conservation, which greatly is going to make us to save a lot of water. And again, one thing everybody has to keep in mind, not only we save water, we are going to discharge less than 20% waste into our sewer lines that are already impacted. And that's just something that I'd like to commend Mr. Enreg Zaldevar and Mr. Adel Hajkhalil for helping me, because they're going to lose 20% revenue on this. And they came in, we have got into a lot of math and equations, not only from water, waste, energy, does it fit, is Mr. Roger Lighthart happy or not? And again, we are going, we have everything under control. The only thing we need to do is to do some more outreach programs. We went to Long Beach this past Saturday. We sat down with tons of plumbers. We brought this on the table. You won't believe it, yesterday we received emails. Yes, the education, we have to provide ongoing education for the whole industry, and it's very easy, it's very simple, all to have, all they have to do to attend a two-hour PowerPoint presentation that we have handy, ready. And you can see a copy of the economical analysis. We have gone to every manufacturers in the country and the world. And again, this is not something that I did in seven months. I worked 23 years at Building and Safety, and I used to be the Chief of Mechanical Engineering Section, and also I managed the test lab for the city. So it was not a seven months work. It was 23 plus seven, by the way.
So he's got to make sure that we get-
I see a city employee who said, "So dedicated." I do appreciate that. I can tell you're passionate about-
He is, he is very passionate.
And when we did the, you know, low-flush toilets many years ago, I'm sure there were people too who said, "Oh, how can you require this?"
Oh, yes.
This is just an ongoing, I mean, we're kind of getting used to it, which is, there are certain requirements that you have.
Right.
This kind of upgrades it to that next level.
Right.
And including both urinals and faucets, is that the-
That's correct. And, and again, we, the first thing we did is, is we're trying it on ourselves. We just, as a matter of fact, today, we got the building and safety inspection on the John Ferraro Building, which is, there's about two or three fixtures left. But we've, we've tried to do it ourselves in our own building. We have an internal program to make sure that we have done this for ourselves in all different shapes and forms. We've done our Haynes Generating Station, which is like 50 years old, and we had a lot of problems with tile and so forth when the 50-year-old thing. So we're trying to do it, do it ourselves, learn ourselves, and then try to teach the, the rest of the city how, how it's done.
Okay, thank you. Great. No further questions or comments, so we'll recommend approval. Should the actionist, yes, approve the proposed ordinance that amends the municipal code. And that'll be without objection. All right, I believe that marks the end of our agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for the specifics.
Thanks. You're welcome.
This is the end of the agenda. This marks the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to comment on, on issues not on the agenda, this is the time to come forward. So seeing that no one is coming forward, the-